...of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
West Bank City Council order, roll call.
Crowner?
Here.
Raleigh?
There.
Knightmeier?
Here.
Bies?
Here.
Waterman?
Here.
Under consent agenda item two, we're gonna strike that tonight. So we need to perfect and approve the agenda. So move. Got a motion?
Support.
With support, is there any discussion? Roll call.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Knightmeier?
Aye.
Bies?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Carried. Consent agenda.
Motion to approve is presented.
Support. With the...
With the amended.
Motion with support to approve consent agenda items one and then three through fifteen, which are the minutes from the Regis City Council meeting on February seventh. Approve Officer Logan administrative assistant De Perro attendance at the Uniform Crime Reporting Conference. Approve Finance Officer Sattler's attendance at the Iowa Municipal Finance Office Conference. Approve payment to Agriland. Approve payment to Berlaken Municipal Waterworks. Approve payment to Dave Bazin. Approve payment to Moyn County Regional Waste Commission. Approve payment to Great River Business Health. Approve payment to Interstate All Battery Center. Approve payment Mississippi Valley Pump. Approve payment to Claude City Analytical Services. Approve payment to Traffic and Transportation Products. Approve payment Tyler Technologies. And approved claims list as presented in the amount of one million, two hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and four cents. Any discussion? Roll call.
Knightmeier?
Aye.
Bies?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Motion carried. Staff reports. Dan?
Got just a couple of things. First of all, I got an email from Nancy from Alliant, and there is a grant available for converting regular lights over to LEDs, and they pay, they set up to seventy-five percent with approved vendors, and it just so happens that Dave Bazin Electric is one of their approved vendors. So I've, they've come along, they're gonna have a proposal later. They were in today and counted lights, and we'll see exactly what Alliant will pay for and what they won't, and see if it's worth doing when, once we get that proposal done. Secondly, like I emailed you all, the, that bill that's in the Senate now to cut that, our backfill, like Leslie's pointed out, that will, that'll be about a dollar ten levy over the three years if they decide to cut that. That's pretty much the state putting that on our backs to, so they can lower taxes and we can be all, and we can raise them. So just wanted to put that out there while we, I had a microphone. That's it.
On the lights, are you gonna include the lights at the parks too, or just streetlights? Or what kind of lights?
It's just up here.
I think it's just in, I think it's just in buildings. It's like a business.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Anybody have anything for Dan? Randy?
Just a couple of things. We've been staying pretty busy this week trying to get all the potholes passed around town. Depending on how much rain we get the next couple of days, we're hoping to start patching alleys next week. And May second is when we're gonna try to do spring cleanup. So...
May second?
Yes. That's all I have.
Gonna have a news loader out for that, Kelly? Or just put it on the water bills?
Um, we just have been putting on the water bills and on Facebook and on the website.
Paper.
We can put it in the paper.
And the other, the other thing, you know, I'd like to thank Randy and his crew and everything due to potholes, even though if we have that gutter worshiper night, it'll probably wash them all out. But I do appreciate, 'cause I've been driving around, there was a lot of potholes.
They've been staying pretty busy trying to get as many as possible.
Yeah.
Anything else for Randy? Jess? Anything going on?
Uh, just hearing a couple of weeks with it being, uh, March, uh, we're gonna have some extra guys out for GTSP through the governor's traffic safety bureau out for extra overtime during Saint Patrick's Day weekend since it's on Saturday this year.
Anything for Jesse? Sean's not here. Kelly, you got anything going on?
Not tonight.
Leslie?
Next week's budget hearing.
Rod?
I'm okay, sir. Thank you.
Rick?
I'm good.
George?
Good.
Trace?
I have nothing.
Al?
I'm good.
All right. At this time, if you can address the council matters that are not on the agenda, please come forward, state your name, and it's a chance to talk.
Michael Cartel. Sure you all know who I am. I don't even know where to begin, to be honest. Except for maybe the new issues over by the storm basin, new holes forming. And you know what? When I put water to those, it's coming through the sides of the basin. I've seen it with my own eyes. I don't really even care to speak to you, to you, or to you.
Well, Mr. Cartel...
Now, I will put my video up against CIT's...
Mr. Cartel, I'm gonna tell you one thing right away. This is the meeting that I run.
Okay.
You have every right to come up here and talk to the council, but I'm not gonna, and I'm gonna talk to you, and you're gonna address me.
I will address you.
And you're gonna address all these council members, and I'm gonna give you five minutes.
Go for it. Ask me a question. Anybody got a question?
We don't have any questions for you, sir.
I know. Nobody wants to talk to me. Won't reply to my emails. Uh, won't follow through with anything.
The case has been settled.
No, it hasn't.
It has, as far as the city is concerned. As far as the city is concerned, the case is settled.
I will put my video against CIT's any day of the week. That video was a farce, and you know it. If any one of you think that water, green water, got into the storm sewer by some other means other than a breach or a failure in the infrastructure, it's ridiculous. You more or less accuse me of doing something sneaky here.
Nobody's accusing you of doing anything sneaky.
That's what it said. It said, "If that water got there, it got there through some other means."
Some other, some other means can mean a whole lot of other things.
Excuse me?
Uh, some other means means a whole other, a lot of other things.
This is not that difficult. I have spoken to a guy from a company who manufactures that kind of stuff. And he even said that CIT's report was ridiculous. The terminology didn't even fit. Now, you told me, Mayor, did you not, if we need to, if that's what we need to do, supply water to these affected areas during that televising, then that's what will be done. And then the day before, I got informed it wasn't going to happen. The newspaper, CIT, didn't want their expensive cameras getting wet. Really? That's not what they told me. You know what they told me? That's what them cameras are made for. They drive them things through deep water all the time. The only explanation you could come up with had nothing to do with the storm sewer. Are you serious? Now, city council members, everything the city has done that you authorized, paid for, was waste money because those original holes on the south side of my driveway, that was told was due to the lift holes, had nothing to do with the lift holes. Did you look at CIT's video, Mayor?
Oh, sir, I mean, what am I gonna see?
You were gonna see a big formation of concrete coming through the side of the storm sewer, through one of the seams. I would call that a breach. And you know what sits down there at the other end, very end of that video, on the bottom of that storm sewer? The grout you guys poured down there some twelve, eleven, twelve years ago. No breaches? Are you kidding me? Three different locations. I put that dyed water into a hole, and in every one, it come running down and through the storm sewer. Now, there's new issues over there by the boundary between my property and Hocketts. And twice you told me you'd call me, and you didn't. Why? I'm guessing you guys have been told that this is in the hands of the attorneys. The thing is, I don't have an attorney, and you knew that. You should've known that. So I don't see any reason why you can't, couldn't talk to me. None of you would come down and take a look at it for yourself. Now, somebody needs to, because this isn't, I don't know what is going on here. This is the most ridiculous thing I have ever seen in my life. I call it misconduct and maladministration, you ask me. And from what I've seen, those are grounds for removal, not just the mayor, but council members as well. Now, I don't know why none of you seem to care that this is eroding away my property. It's gonna decrease its value if I ever have to sell the thing. And this is, the thing is CIT could fix this. They have the techniques. They could've fixed this a long time ago. Instead, you give me the runaround, runaround. You would never go down there and take a look while I supplied water. That's what happened that very first time. A guy went down there, and what did he see? He seen water coming through on the seams. This isn't lift holes. This is seams. CIT, oh, they denied Klingner and Associates from doing the inspection because your attorney said, "Don't do anything that may be incriminating." What the heck was that all about? Huh? And then... And then you hire CIT, and they come, and they put the camera down in the manhole. You don't even notify me till the day before to let me know that, no, I'm not gonna get to put any water to these holes, which I shouldn't have had to anyway. CIT's got the techniques to find any problem and the solutions for them. And what do they do? They look at the very first seam and the very first lift hole, which up at that end, right now, I don't know that there's any issues. And then they travel down that pipe, and they don't look at a single thing till they get to the concrete formation, which they call a deposit. There's a big chunk coming out of one side, some out of the other side. It's down near my driveway, where some, the ricks or whoever, at some point, uh, poured, looks like an addition section. How it got there, I have no idea, but it wasn't in the report, was it? Was it in CIT's report? No. And they don't even do a three sixty on that seam. They have to back up and get it start, and it hops over it, and they don't even look at anything until sixty feet in, because that's what you told them. There's no damage or possible damage until about sixty feet in. Well, by that time, you've just drove right underneath at least a dozen holes in my yard. And then what do they do? They look at nine lift holes in a row. Nice close-up shots, zooming in and everything. And throughout that entire one hundred and almost forty feet of storm pipe, they look at three seams, three of them. And it wouldn't surprise me if you guys didn't have them handpicked, to be honest. And who, who is it that determined that that storm sewer has nothing to do with the issues in my yard? One of your statements said that the holes are, uh, not in line with the storm sewer. You've gotta be kidding me. Have any of you drove by my place? Any of you have looked at that? You can look at my stakes. You got a row over here, and a row over here. And you know what goes right between them? The storm sewer. And the section that CIT looked at the most, if you were to look at it at above, at an aerial view, uh, I've got a lot of holes up here, and then down by the storm drain, and then this section, well, the driveway, there's, can't really see, you don't know, is not much of anything. That's where they concentrated all their video. How is it the company that has the techniques to find the problems and the solutions for them were unable to find infiltration into the storm sewer? I did it for a couple bucks worth of dye tablets. They charged, what, eight dollars a mile to get down here from McCall'sburg, and you spent a few thousand dollars to come up with the wrong conclusion? Are you serious? Now...
That's a point of perception. You think it's the wrong...
This is no point of perception, Mayor.
You think it's the wrong conclusion. We were told that it's not the problem. And it doesn't cause, it didn't cause the problem.
They did not do what was needed to be done.
You even contacted the Ombudsman's Office, and they investigated, and they found no fault at all.
You wanna know what they did? Would you like to know?
Well, they, obviously, they must've hired their own engineer or somebody to come down like that.
Not really. No, not really.
See, there's the problem, Mr. Cartel.
No.
We're never gonna agree on this.
If any one of you think that storm sewer has nothing to do with the issues on my property, you, you know, you've got to know. You guys cannot be that ignorant of this situation. I mean, not a one of you, when I asked you over and over and over again, if it's not going there, where do you think it's going? You wouldn't touch that with a ten-foot pole. Impossible to go, to be going to the storm sewer. And you and the, when Klingner and Associates asked for documentation on any work done or whatever, you sent them a history lesson or something, and then they're, I mean, you knew even before I moved into that house, when the ricks were there, there was an issue, and that that old drain tile was plugged up and collapsed and doesn't mean anything. You knew it. You've known it for years. Now, you want, look, I ask you, city council members, look at what I've got. He's like, he's like, I don't know about that.
Yeah, I think we've heard enough. I've given you more than five minutes.
Yeah, I've had my say. I mean, somebody needs to talk to me because there's more issues developing down there. Come and take a look, would you? That's all I'm asking. See what I have, and decide for yourself. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the council? All right, we'll go to, uh, new business. I'm number one, is consider a resolution adding Gunner Hoffer to the fire department.
Motion to approve.
For it. Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Knightmeier?
Aye.
Bies?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
A motion carried. Gunner, you're on the department. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Well, I want to also congratulate Gunner, and, uh, he's joined the National Guard. So thank you for wanting to serve both. Ready? I have number two, is to consider payment Snyder Associates for engineering services related to wastewater treatment plant improvement project, in the amount of eighteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-three cents. So move.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Bies?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Knightmeier?
Aye.
And motion carried. Lindsay, you wanna do us an update or anything? Dan?
Um, we're looking at substantial completion at the plant by June. At that time, we'll have most of the equipment online and running. Once they have that done, they can shut down the existing air mod, modifications to that. And then once both the air mods are up and running, and they can start with kind of regens, removing sludge and adding over lift stations. I can have that done.
And any questions? And number three, is to consider change order number three from Leander Construction for changes of the wastewater treatment plant project, in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars and three cents. And there's about nine different ones there that I can see.
Yeah, several smaller ones. Um, we just kind of looked them all in the room. Do you have any questions?
The majority of the prices is for the lift station upgrades, right? Pretty much.
Uh, eight thousand, a bit, yeah, a couple hundred. The electrical, and then there's some, the stilling off the lift station as well, um, and the H O S. Yeah.
Motion to approve.
For it. Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Waterman?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Knightmeier?
Aye.
Bies?
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm number four, is to consider payment to Leander Construction for work completed on the wastewater treatment plant project, in the amount of one million, twenty thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Motion to approve.
For it. Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Knightmeier?
Aye.
Bies?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm number five, is consider payment to French Renniker Associates for engineering services related to the Broadway Street Reconstruction Agency Gear Avenue Resurfacing Projects, amount of three thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars and seventy-three cents.
Motion to approve.
For it. Motion with support. Any discussion?
Well, I, I see Matt's here. I don't know if we're gonna talk about the update on that project and what we're gonna do next and when, or...
I was gonna give him a chance to do that.
Okay.
Which one, for Broadway?
Yes.
Yep, after some back and forth with the Ritter, Ritters, uh, it turns out that the last two weekends in April and the first two weekends in May are their busiest time periods. With Phase Two, we're going to be shutting down one of their drives, and, uh, he indicated that he's got semis almost daily, just because that's their peak time. So talking with Nelson, we're, we're waiting to see what the weather does. Their hope is that they can get it done late March, early April, and get it done before that time period. But they're okay with coming back, um, May fourteenth, which would be the start of the third week in May, and then starting Phase Two at that point if the weather doesn't cooperate. Uh, they think Phase Two's gonna take about two and a half weeks to get done, and then they'll jump to the third phase, which goes by, uh, uh, trailways north up to... So we're really gonna kind of wait and see what the weather does here.
My, my only qu, thing is, they can go in any time to tear out what's there, right? I mean, they could do the base work.
The ba, well, you wanna keep access for semis. That's the problem. So if we remove the pavement...
Yeah, well, I mean, I mean, if we, if they start it tomorrow, if the, you know, you can tear out all the concrete at any time.
Oh, I see. I, I guess we didn't really consider that, thinking that if we moved in, got it removed, and then they weren't allowed to do anything until the weather broke? I mean, something I can talk with, if you're okay with leaving the street down for that until the weather.
I mean, who would, who would it be? Who, it wouldn't affect anybody, 'cause the north si, the south si, the north side's still be open for trailways, right?
The north would be open for trailways. The only thing would be the ABC Pond would have to utilize Ritter's south driveway. That would be the only impact.
I mean, we're talking all of March and half of April.
I, I, if, if, I guess, if that's a consensus, I can bring that up with the live.
I, I just like, I just like to, I'd just like you to ask Nelsons to see.
I, I think their big hesitation was is coming in, removing it, and then leaving it sit, waiting for the weather to cooperate, and having nobody on site for potentially a week or two. Sometimes that doesn't look good to the public when there's no access and there's nobody working.
It's gonna be a gamble, but I agree with Hans. I mean, it's something to look at.
Anything you take off the front end, you won't have on the back end. It...
Yeah, I mean, if, if that, if that's, if that's the council's willingness, I'm sure, 'cause they can, you know, remove all that base, obviously, right now. I mean, whether it does impact them, 'cause they're working off the pavement.
I mean, I just hate to wait till, what is it, the fourteenth of April, or whatever that date is, and then, and then they get in there, and it's, because then Steve say he's also got some busy time in the end of May and stuff.
Mother's Day.
Yeah, I think April, April and May, I think all of that's bad for him, for the, it gets worse as you get later.
It takes four seasons long to tear that out. And if the weather cooperates...
They could do the base work.
Right.
And wait for a day or a couple of days or a week, when it, when it's decent weather.
But we could get a lot of snow, too, and we could be sitting there with, like Matt said, I mean, I'm not trying to talk anybody out of anything, but everybody needs to be aware that it's only, it's only the end of February. The weather could turn bad, and then the streets opened up, and we don't have access for those people for maybe a month.
Understand that.
But it'll be ready. If, if everything cooperates, I mean, we could, we could be sitting pretty good if we go ahead and go right now.
Yeah, I'd talk to them, see what they say.
And if you're, if, if that's what you guys would like, I'm sure, I'm sure...
I mean, if they could get it done.
Wouldn't have much of an issue coming in, because it's really good work for them to do during this type of weather. You're not dealing with the mud just because you've got it there.
And, and I mean, they, they poured cement when it was colder than, than what the, uh, temperature's gonna be in probably April and first part of May.
I can definitely talk with Mike Nelson.
Just talk with him and see, see what they could do, or if they could do something like that. Any other questions? Roll call on that.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Knightmeier?
Aye.
Bies?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm number six, is to consider payment to Mike Nelson Concrete Painting for work completed on the Broadway Street Reconstruction Project, in the amount of twenty-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars and twenty-five cents.
Motion to approve.
For it. Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Knightmeier?
Aye.
Bies?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm number seven, is to consider change order number one from Mike Nelson Concrete Painting for the changes to the Broadway Reconstruction Project, in the amount thirty-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars and thirty-nine cents. And I understand that's because of the extra underground utility work.
Yes, that's all the modification we had to do to accommodate all the fiber and the telephone and all other stuff. Just like the silver when you proved there's quite a bit in there, just lumped into a change order.
So move. Support. Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Bies?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Knightmeier?
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm number eight, is to consider change order number two from Hickey Contract Company for changes in the Kimberly-Rothella Melville Street Reconstruction Project, in the amount of nine thousand, four hundred and nine dollars and ninety-five cents. That's pretty much just a pass-through.
Motion to approve.
For it. Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Knightmeier?
Aye.
Bies?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm number nine, is consider quote from Southeast Island Garage Doors to install doors on the Fire Department Straining Building, in the amount of three thousand, ninety-three dollars and fifty cents.
Motion to approve.
For it. Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Knightmeier?
Aye.
Bies?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm number ten, is consider hiring Risco to run internet fiber to the wastewater treatment plant, in the amount of four thousand and fifty-five dollars, and then it's a hundred and seventy-five dollar monthly fee. four thousand and fifty-five dollars, and then it's a hundred and seventy-five dollar monthly fee.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Raleigh.
Hi.
Hi, Mayor.
Hi.
Please.
Hi.
Waterman.
Hi.
Crowner.
Hi.
Motion carried. I'm number eleven is consider purchase of a pool vacuum for the swimming pool in the amount of four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Some move?
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Hi, Mayor.
Hi.
Please.
Hi.
Waterman.
Hi.
Crowner.
Hi.
Raleigh.
Hi.
Motion carried. I'm number twelve is consider a quote from Carpetland USA to replace the flooring at City Hall for an amount of seven thousand, six hundred and forty-nine dollars.
Motion approved.
Support.
Motion with support, any discussion? Roll call.
Please.
Hi.
Waterman.
Hi.
Crowner.
Hi.
Raleigh.
Hi.
Hi, Mayor.
Hi.
Motion carried. I'm number thirteen is to consider resolution hiring professional cleaning group to clean City Hall. It's twenty dollars per hour and usually about seven hours.
Some move?
Support.
Motion with support, any discussion? Roll call.
Waterman.
Hi.
Crowner.
Hi.
Raleigh.
Hi.
Hi, Mayor.
Hi.
Please.
Hi.
Motion carried. Any old business, anybody have any old business? Anyone wishing to address the council matters we did discuss or didn't discuss tonight, here's a chance. Entertain a motion to adjourn. Trace moved, give me a second.
Support.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Here's adjourn, thank you.